Good morning, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, March 17th, St. Patrick's Day. It's 9:00 AM, we're at the Palm Coast Community Center for the regularly scheduled meeting of the Palm Coast City Council. Would you please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mayor Nets.
Here.
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Here.
Councilmember Di Lorenzo.
Here.
Councilmember Novio.
Here.
Councilmember Shipley.
Here.
Mayor, all members are present.
Thank you very much. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the March 3rd council meeting and the March 10th council workshop. Are there any additions, corrections, or is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second, and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries without objection. Agenda item number two, proclamation recognizing March as purchasing month. Mr. Landon, are you going to introduce this one?
Cindy is going to be the point, and then Gary and Diane. Couldn't help it, Brian.
Good morning. We have our purchasing manager and our contracts and risk management manager here to hear the proclamation.
Mr. Mayor, Council, whereas purchasing, contracting, and materials management professionals play a significant role in the efficiency and effectiveness of government and business, and whereas through their combined purchasing power, purchasing and materials management professionals spend billions of dollars each year making a significant impact on economic conditions throughout the world. And the state of Florida and the city of Palm Coast have a solid commitment to promoting ethical standards, best practices, education, professional development, and research. And whereas these professionals make it possible for state and municipal government to serve the citizens of Florida by obtaining the goods and services needed to complete their jobs in an efficient and economical matter, and whereas professional purchasing employees throughout Florida make a special effort during the month of March to inform the public about the important role they play as professionals in business, industry, and government. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Palm Coast City Council does hereby designate March 2015 as purchasing month. Thank you.
Good morning, Council. Just want to thank you guys for recognizing all the hard work that we do every year, and thank you.
I'll say, I'll say, I'll, no, 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 no.
Come on now!
Brian and Dave Clegas and I have, the three of us have been together for eight years almost now, and we do strive very hard to make sure that taxpayer dollars are spent according to all policies, procedures, ordinances, laws, and hopefully we'll be together for another eight years. Thank you.
21st, 2015 as Flood Safety Awareness Week. Mr. Landon.
This one actually brought a very serious meaning to us a few months back as we experienced somewhere between 15 and 20 inches of rain in a very short period of time. A lot of hard work goes into making sure we aren't flooded, and Constance, Cindy, whoever's going to take the lead?
Stand at attention. Whereas floods can happen anytime, anywhere, and without warning, and whereas flooding creates emergencies of great concern to the city of Palm Coast with imminent threat to life and property and can cause hundreds of millions of dollars in damages to homes, businesses, and local government infrastructure, and whereas the city of Palm Coast has been in the National Flood Insurance Program since February 4th of 2002, and whereas the city council of the city of Palm Coast has adopted a unified land development code that governs flood damage protection, and whereas the city of Palm Coast has recently experienced a major rain event September 2014, and whereas the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, National Weather Service Offices, and partner agencies have designated March 15th through March 21st as Flood Safety Awareness Week for 2015 as part of their seasonal safety campaign, and whereas damage from a flood is not normally covered under a standard homeowner's policy, residents are encouraged to review their flood risk and purchase flood insurance to protect their property from flood. And whereas the city council of the city of Palm Coast concurs that to have a public that is well informed of the dangers associated with flooding can improve its preparedness and reduce the occurrence of death and injury as a result of severe flooding. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Palm Coast does hereby designate March 15th, 2015 through March 21st, 2015 as City of Palm Coast Flood Safety Awareness Week, signed the 17th day of March 2015. City of Palm Coast, Florida, John Nets, Mayor. And accepting will be my favorite jarhead, Constance, who has also just become a grandma. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council, for acknowledging Flood Safety Awareness Week. We take flood safety very seriously, so seriously in fact that accepting the proclamation are the city's state-certified floodplain managers. We have four of them employed within this city. We are all well-educated in flood safety aspects, but we each have a primary focus in the program. We have Denise Bevan, who is our environmental specialist, who works with new development, redevelopment, and also with land use changes to preserve the natural functions and benefits of the floodplain. We have Michael Brennan, who works on the city's mitigation projects and also focuses on our esteemed drainage and stormwater system that's well-recognized in the program. We have Kendra Ionati, who focuses on community outreach, and you can see some of her work in the city's website. We have documents at the public library. She also works with our GIS department to create the maps that are needed to support our CRS program for our community rating system. And I'm Constance Bentley, and I am the city's CRS coordinator. I work with building permits and elevation certificates, and I also am a direct contact for the public to assist them with flood zones and their flood insurance needs. So for this week, what we have planned is we had city staff to create this wonderful poster for us that will be displayed. Also, we will have a social media campaign where we will give flood tips each day of the week this week, so please join us on Facebook and on our website. And last but not least, we will have Flood Friday event at the city offices from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM where a certified floodplain manager will assist you with flood zone information, flood insurance information, or any questions that you may have about the program. So please join us on Friday for Flood Friday, and again, thank you very much for this important event.
Agenda item number four, proclamation recognizing April as Water Conservation Month.
Whereas water is a basic and essential need of every living creature, and whereas the St. John's River Water Management District is working together with the state of Florida and other water management districts, local governments, and water supply utilities to increase awareness about the importance of water conservation, and whereas April is typically a dry month in Florida when water demands are increased, and whereas the St. John's River Water Management District encourages and supports water conservation through various educational programs and special events, and whereas every business, industry, school, and citizen can help by conserving water and thus promote a healthy economy and community, and whereas the St. John's River Water Management District is calling upon each citizen and business to help protect our precious resources by practicing water conservation measures and becoming more aware of the need to conserve water. And whereas the city of Palm Coast is participating in the fourth annual National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation and encourages all residents to take the pledge online at www.mywaterpledge.com. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, does hereby declare the month of April as Water Conservation Month, signed March 17th, 2015, City of Palm Coast, Florida, John Nets, Mayor. Water conservation is very important in our community. We unfortunately do not have a cheap resource for water, so it is important that we conserve it. It helps us in the long run not have to find new water sources, and the city has done an incredible job with projects like zero liquid discharge, white recovering water, and other efforts, but it's very important for the citizens as well to check your irrigation timers, make sure you're not over-watering, and because a lot of water is wasted on the outside of the home as compared to inside the home. And Brian, I think you probably have more, or no? Not today. Okay. Let's hit a picture.
And speaking of water, agenda item number five, presentation for the 2014 Plant Excellence Award from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection.
All right, we are going to keep the water theme going here for a few minutes. All right, well, as you can see, I have the water plant operators and manager behind me. They're going to be receiving today the 2014 Plant Operations Excellence Award from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. DEP gave only one of these awards in the northeast region this year, which is 19 counties, and that was for our three water plants, so we're very proud of that. We've received this award several times in the past five years, and it's based on a variety of factors related to the operation of our three plants, including staff training and certification, safety, emergency preparedness, the appearance of the plant being outstanding, record-keeping, conservation, we mentioned again, and also customer relations. And the recognition is really indicative of our utility department and specifically the water treatment plant staff, their professionalism, and their dedication to providing us with excellent drinking water, and they're also very important in our water conservation efforts that we were just mentioning. So I'd like to take the opportunity to thank them, and while we're on the same subject of water, I also want to say, not related to this award, but we did receive another award just last week. It was the Florida section of the American Water Works Association Region Two's annual Best Tasting Drinking Water Contest. So they had a number of cities, a number of utility departments who participated in that. We won for the region, and now we'll be able to take our water to the state level to compete against all the other regions at the Florida Water Resource Conference in May. And I was asking earlier, how do you transport water so that it tastes the best? And they said, in a glass container. So, all right, so we're going to present this award, and we'll do a photo. Would the council like to come up and be in the photo with them? That'd be great.
While we're doing that, if I could just add that this really is a big deal. I mean, to think that 19 county region, there are three plants that were recognized, and all three of them are Palm Coast plants. It says a lot for our operators and what a great team we have.
Jim wants to speak first. Jim's going to speak, and then we're going to do the photo.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Honorable Mayor, esteemed members of the city council, Mr. Landon, we are thrilled and honored to be here this morning. I'm Jim Hogan, Water Operations Manager. With me today are the three chief operators from our water treatment facilities. We're really thrilled and honored to be here this morning and accept this recognition on behalf of all of our operations staff. These folks are a talented group, dedicated professionals that day in and day out, their primary function is to provide safe, potable, quality, good tasting, drinking water to our customers, the citizens of Palm Coast, and I couldn't be more proud of this group that continue to excel, and I'm just really fortunate to be a part of the group. Thank you very much.
with ATS regarding to red light camera program. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, in my very long career in local government, I don't think I've ever experienced a program that's had such a, such a moving target, had so many changes. Whether that was state legislature making changes on a regular basis, or the courts not making up their minds, one court deciding one direction, other courts deciding the other direction. So we've worked with our vendor, ATS, to try to come up with a program that hopefully will address all the court issues, address concerns of city council, greatly reduces our program, partly because it's been very successful, Bo's going to show, as far as the number of violations we've seen and gone bad. But we have a proposal that we believe is the best, based on the target we know today as far as moving forward with this program, to avoid lawsuits and conflicts in the future. So Bo's going to give you the details.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Just an overview of today's, this morning's presentation. Talk a little bit about the history, and as the city manager alluded to, the muddled history of state changes and legal challenges about those interpretations of those laws, some of the challenges that the program faced, and of course, how we move forward in amending the ATS contract to be consistent. Of course, the red light camera program began back late 2006 in order to change driver, with the goal of changing driver behavior. Of course, intersections are some of the most dangerous places on the road as distracted drivers move through them, pedestrians, bicyclists, paying attention to the signals is important, or accidents, injuries, and fatalities can happen. So back in 2006, the city implemented this program in order to effort to change that driver behavior. And just some of the videos have captured crashes occurring at intersections with those drivers that aren't necessarily paying attention to the signals, including bicyclists not observing signals. And of course, even several seconds after the light changes red, driver's not paying This day of the red light camera program began in December 19, 2006. It was established by city council through some ordinance changes. Shortly thereafter, a procurement process went out to procure a vendor to implement the program. ATS contract was approved in November of 2007, several months, the program beginning with the red light camera program being implemented. Of course, when the program began, it was a city code violation. The fine was $125. It was non-criminal and a non-moving violation. In July of 2010, the Mark Wendell Act went into effect. It preempted all red light camera programs and established the authorization for the use of those programs, set the penalties where those fines would be remitted, and then of course, a conversion to a uniform traffic citation if not paid, which would end up with points on your license. The fine was set by the state at $158, with $83 going to the state of Florida. So the program was of course changed by that state law. And like any good law, it was amended shortly thereafter, July 1st, 2012, setting dismissal standards. Of course, city council always amended the contract to be consistent with those changes, and then in 2012, additional cameras were approved as well. Once again, the law was amended in 2013. It clarified right turn on red, and then alternative procedures for challenging a notice of violation. Of course, as we're in session today, even more changes of course are being considered. Most recently, and most importantly, January 30th, the motion for rehearing was denied in the Hollywood case, or ARAM as known, and of course, that dealt with how cities reviewed uniform traffic citations and how they're issued. Immediately thereafter, the city modified its process to be consistent with that ruling. Today, city council has a contract amendment which makes it even more consistent with that ruling. Of course, when we look at results and how the city strives to change driver behavior, one of those indications is the actual red light camera citations issued. When you look at the original 10 cameras that were in the contract from 2008 to 2014, there's been an 81% decrease in the number of violations. When you look at all the cameras, which started in 2013, there was a 53% decrease in the number of violations, showing a significant strides in changing driver behavior. Oh, that's right. And of course, when we look at the statistics about how folks reoffend or whether they reoffend, 87% of those receiving a notice of violation do not reoffend. 10% reoffend once more, and for some reason, there's still 3% of people that like to run red lights. Some of the challenges, of course, as kind of shown in the timeline, the state law changes and the interpretation of those laws have really muddled the city's original program and its intent. State law has changed, what, three times now? We've had several court cases on the interpretation of those laws, and of course, for every court challenge and law change, the public understanding of what that means, from whether they're illegal to whether you're allowed to run, to turn right on red, becomes quite confusing for the public. We have challenges with our existing ATS contract and how we modify that, and of course, staff resources in reviewing the notice of violations. So with all those challenges in mind, city council directed city staff to look at options, and of course, how do we move forward? The preferred option, of course, is amending the ATS contract to be consistent with that court ruling and some of the city council desires. The ATS contract amendment that you have in front of you today revises our business procedures consistent with the recent court ruling on how notice of violations and uniform traffic citations are issued through the program. As city council's desire, it also reduces the number of cameras to five, and it either...
Excuse me, Bo.
Yes, sir.
Is it possible for you to go through the process of how the business process was? So I know how it, how the, from the instance of a, of someone going through the light and getting that picture goes to ATS. Can you take us through what that process is now?
Sure. With, with this change in the business procedures, city staff would be reviewing each event. An event would be when that, that camera flashes. Previously, city staff reviewed a smaller subset that was weeded down by ATS, the vendor, but in no way, even before, was a notice of violation issued without city staff reviewing that violation and approving it. So the business process will change, that city staff will review all events for the five cameras. The workload is estimated to be about the same going from the 43 to the five, and that's one of the reasons why we're recommending that we reduce the number of cameras to five is to keep that workload similar. And then from there on out, city staff would be handling the process of issuing if the notice of violation is not paid or not contested, that the, the city staff would also issue the uniform traffic citation. That's directly consistent with the recent Hollywood court case ruling. Does that, you... Reduce the number of cameras to five, and I have a slide, next slide, indicating those five cameras. And of course, this is an option to you today, city council, is either to maintain or reduce the term of the contract. In discussions with ATS, the, of course, the current option, maintaining the current term of 2019 in the contract, would maintain the city revenue, which is $700 a camera per month, or $42,000 a year for the five cameras. The second option in our discussions with ATS is to reduce the term to 2017. They also would, if that was the case, reduce the city revenue in half to $350 per camera per month, which equates to $21,000 annually. And in your amendment today, the ATS would pay for the current class action lawsuit defense as part of this change. The five cameras, originally proposed by ATS, are the top five. You'll see in our discussions with ATS to switch and substitute PC 13, which is the northbound Belterra Parkway, Cypress Point Parkway. It's at the same intersection as the other camera, just a different direction, and of course, a higher number of violations, and that's city staff's recommendation, but of course, up to city council. With that, that concludes the presentation. The resolution you have in your agenda packet, of course, includes the option of whether you maintain or reduce the term of the contract. We, of course, would need direction on that, and the number of cameras is also included.
Let me, let me just add to that, that any motion to approve the resolution would need to indicate whether that motion would be for continuing to 2019 or reducing the term to 2017.
Counsel, questions?
Well, one, as far as ATS pays current class action lawsuits, just current, anything else? What if some other suits pop up? Is it just the one that's active right now?
The amendment that is suggested in your agenda packet specifically provides for the defense to be provided by law firm in southeast Florida that would be compensated by ATS. It further provides that if there were, the proposed amendment also provides that if there were any other lawsuits arising out of the Hollywood case that involve as defendants both ATS and the city of Palm Coast, that that same law firm or another law firm would be retained to defend the city of Palm Coast at the expense of ATS. So it's, it's broader. It's broader than just the current class action lawsuit. With that said, there's two other factors, and that is, is that the existing contract has a provision for indemnification and a duty to defend as well. The proposed amendment certainly further clarifies and arguably expands that provision in the existing contract. And then lastly, I wanted to make sure that the city council and the public... And then, lastly, I wanted to make sure that the city council and the public is aware that one, there was one other change. Since we, Mr. Lan and I had an opportunity to speak with you last Tuesday, we received correspondence from the Florida League of Cities that confirmed that they will be providing a defense. They have retained a law firm, a different law firm in southeast Florida, to provide a defense to the city of Palm Coast in the current class action lawsuit as well. And I have had communications with council for both of those law firms, and they have indicated that the city of Palm Coast, if it so desires, if it so desires, can have both the law firms work together to defend the city of Palm Coast in the current class action lawsuit.
Other counsel questions? Mr. McGuire.
I've got a comment, and it won't really affect the vote one way or the other. When I ran for this office, I ran and I supported red light cameras. I made it clear to everybody everywhere I spoke that I supported them, and yet I got elected anyway. I get lots and lots of correspondence from people that do not want to see this program go away in any way, shape, or form. I've been to a lot of the hearings where people get up and contest their camera violation, and I hear stuff like, "Well, there wasn't any traffic, and I thought it'd be okay," or "I've been driving for 37 years, and I've never had a ticket, so, you know, that must exonerate me." And what I'm, what I'm getting the feeling from, and I hope I'm wrong, is that these laws that are passed are okay for other people. But me, I'm a good driver. I should be able to use my own judgment, decide whether I want to stop or not. If I want to go 55 in a 45 mile an hour zone, I should be able to do so, because, you know, that law is fine for those people. But for me, I should be able to make the call myself. And I think if we support such a thing, we should take it even further, and we should prohibit all stores in the city of Palm Coast for having security cameras, because, hey, you're picking on these people that want a shoplift. I mean, golly. So, I mean, that's, this has been building up in me in a long time. I'm sorry if I offended anybody, but that's the way I feel. Thank you.
Other counsel questions? So, no other questions at this point? We'll open the meeting for the public, aim for the public, which we heard on this agenda item. Up to the count. Podium, give us your name and limit your contribution to three minutes.
Jack Carroll, Palm Coast. I'm a shoplifter.
Somehow, Jack, I bet you're not.
And he's now offended.
I have a couple of, a couple of questions I'd like to ask. If we, if they lose, if we lose, or whoever it is loses, and we have to repay all these people that have paid their fines, where are we going to get that money from? You know, it's already spent. And how much of that is the ATS going to put in? I mean, they're getting so much of the fine, and we get so much of the fine, and the state gets so much of the fine. Are all these different units going to say, "Well, this is how much we collected, and this is what we're going to get to court?" This is what I want to know. But mainly, where are we going to get that money from?
Thank you. Next speaker.
I've got notes. Ron DeCosta, Palm Coast. I've always been an advocate for red light cameras, and the reason being is that I obey the rules of the road. I don't have to worry about how many cameras are out here looking at me as to what I'm doing, or how I'm driving, or anything else. And why? Because I obey the rules. I think, I know that the city wants to and is going to eliminate the red light cameras as soon as they can. I feel bad about this decision, and why? Because it was working to control or cut down on accidents and probably deaths. When Palm Coast first started this program, it was to promote safety for the community. I will admit that the city went overboard with too many cameras. All we needed was to cover between five to 10 intersections. But now that the city has spent so much time and energy to get rid of the red light cameras, I wonder how much time is going to be spent coming up with a better solution. Safety for the citizens is a priority, and the citizens of this community that don't obey the rules of the road should pay. So, when are we going to have a solution to these red light camera runners now that we're going to eliminate red light cameras? During the elections, this past elections, most of the candidates in the debate that I went to at the Hilton were against red light cameras. Why? Why not? It was the popular way to go. You're going to get elected, vote against the red light cameras, because that's what they want. They went with the popular vote at the time, but there was only one candidate, and she's sitting right over here, that came up with a possible solution at the time of that debate. That was to cut back on the number of cameras, which you are doing. No one else came up with that solution, and no one has to this date. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker.
Good morning. George Mail, Palm Coast. The one thing that wasn't mentioned, and I'm sure you have an answer, is if this is approved by city council, when will this take effect, and when will the other cameras stop working, or however you want to phrase it?
We'll get you an answer. Next speaker.
How you doing? Carmichael McMillan. I want to address a couple of comments that were made. Well, at the last city council meeting, a comment was made that all the people who want to get rid of red light cameras are somehow trying to avoid some sort of premeditated vehicular homicide in the future, so they don't want cameras there recording them. I find that offensive. The next issue is that the assumption is that everyone who wants to get rid of the cameras somehow wants to, once again, break the law and get away with it. I've never received a ticket, and I want these cameras gone, because the system is unfair. It doesn't work. The prior comment about reduction of accidents, there have been more deadly crashes in Palm Coast since you put those cameras in. More people have died in car accidents since you put those cameras in. That means it's not working. That was what you wanted to stop. More people have died in car crashes since the cameras have been put in. Another issue was brought up about what happens when you have to pay back the fines. Okay? One out of every nine dollars of the fines came back to the city. If by some chance, we have to, the city is sued, and all that money has to be paid back to the citizens, it would be a glorious, like a tax refund. It would boost this economy, because eight dollars out of those nine come from the state or from the company in Arizona. You would help this economy if we were to somehow lose. It would help this economy. That's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker. Next speaker. So, you're going to approach the podium, and close the public portion of the meeting, go back to council, but first, let's see if we can answer some of the questions. Mr. Reichman, you've been following this very closely for a period of time. If we were to lose one of these class action suits, what are the consequences? Where would the money come from as far as the city operating funds are concerned? What is the ratio of remuneration, if you will, from ATS, from the state, from the city?
I can answer a large portion of those questions, Mr. Mayor and council. First of all, the monies that are paid by violators when they receive a notice of violation or when a UTC is issued and they ultimately pay that are distributed in three ways, as all of you know. City receives some, really the smallest percentage. State of Florida has received the largest portion, and then ATS receives a portion of that which is distributed to the city. If there is ultimately an award issued to those individuals that have run red lights and have paid either a notice of violation or a traffic citation, the monies that would have to go to pay that judgment would be prorated from those that have received it. So, I think it's important for the public to understand that ATS would be obligated to pay its share. State would be obligated to pay the share that is received, and the city would only be obligated to pay that portion that it has received. Another way to say that is that the city would not have to repay the amounts that are received by ATS. The city would not have to pay the amounts that have been received by the state of Florida, and that's common sense. The other thing that I think is important for the public to understand is that it's very presumptuous. It's very presumptuous to assume that there will be a judgment, and if so, that that judgment will be in an amount of all of the individuals in the city of Palm Coast that have run red lights since the Mark Wendell Act was passed and have, and have paid. There are many substantive defenses that will be raised, one of which is the voluntary defense doctrine, which I think all of you have, are aware of, which provides that if, under Florida law and under general law, in this type of situation, if you make a payment and you have not, if you, if you pay the, when you receive the notice of violation or the uniform traffic citation, that bars you from making a claim for you to get your money back. And that's just general law. And the other thing that's very important to understand is that at some point in time, the individuals that have brought this class action lawsuit, in their name alone, are going to have to go to a federal judge to establish a class. And the size of that class is going to be at issue. And it's important to note that this class action lawsuit that's identified there is a compilation of over 10 different plaintiffs filing 10 or more different lawsuits against different jurisdictions. Each of those jurisdictions, in each of those different claims, will have a different size of class. And I'm just touching the surface. There's going to be a lot of complicated issues that are going to be brought up. So, the point I'm trying to make is that the ultimate amount of any award, if there is such, is going to be much smaller than I think is perceived. And, again, the only amount that would have to be repaid, if at all, if any at all, would be just from those funds that the city of Palm Coast has received, from those folks that received red light camera citations or notices of violation since the Mark Wendell Act was passed in 2010. I'll defer to city manager as far as specifically from what resources those, those amounts, to the extent that I've tried to describe them, from what resources those would come, but I will defer to Jim on that.
Yes. All revenue that the city has received, that we actually have kept from people paying the violations, has gone into our street improvement fund. It's a capital improvement fund. It hasn't gone into any of our operation funds. So, if we were to have to reimburse anybody or had any expenses from the program, it would come out of the street improvement fund, the same fund that benefited from receiving that revenue. Our annual revenue would more than cover any expenses or any exposure we have. So, it would just be another line item in our capital. Instead of making an improvement, we would be putting a line item in there to make, make payments for that year out of our street improvement fund.
Thank you. Second question had to do with, well, what are the alternatives? If, in fact, the red light cameras go away, what does this mean in terms of intersection safety, and what other possible solutions are there? And we have had, probably each council member has been communicated with residents who have alternative solutions. One that comes to mind is, prior to the stop bar, the stop line, if you painted on the concrete or on the asphalt, red light camera head or intersection head or something like that, that was giving people more warning. We have, city councils asked the manager to talk to various traffic engineers to see if we can put together a request for proposal to see if there are other possible solutions. I tend to be skeptical. Those doggone red lights are pretty big, hanging up there right in your line of vision. If you somehow don't see the red light, I doubt that you're going to see some writing on the pavement, but you never know. And our goal from the get-go on this program has been trying to reduce the incidence of traffic accidents at intersections. If the red light cameras go away, the city will pursue any other possible options that there may be. Don't know what they are, but we'll look.
It's worthy to say that any other options that this council would pursue will cost money.
No question about it.
This program costs zero.
Yeah. That's certainly true.
May I, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
The program doesn't cost zero. The program, in my opinion, is taking $2 to $3 million a year out of our economy. That is not nothing. That's taking money out of the pockets of everyone. Speaking with the sheriff's department, the number of accidents from rear ends have gone up, not down. We perceive that a red light or a sign is going to stop someone from running the red light. When they're not paying attention in the first place, nothing is going to stop them until they get hit by someone going the other way. Someone texting on the phone, eating a sandwich, putting on makeup, there is no stopping them from, this is what we should be attacking, is the destructive driver not trying to stop the person who's paying attention. So, someone's paying attention, they see the light, they stop. Someone's texting on the phone, they never see the light. I don't see how a camera, a sign, or anything is going to stop them from blowing through that light.
I agree.
The third question had to do, and it's so simple, what would the effective date be? Assuming council passes one or the other of these variations on this resolution, when would that go into effect?
We, if you adopt this today, we will forward it on to ATS. They would still have to sign, execute the agreement. As soon as they execute the agreement, then it would go to effect, and we would start the new business practice. But it does require their approval. We've been in contact with them. They are, have indicated they will support either this amendment with either one of the options you have in front of you as far as the term. So, I think that approval will be quickly, but I can't speak for them as to when they will get their approval to us.
We will expect them to work with all expeditiousness.
Yes. It's in their best interest, too.
Finally, Commander Carmen, I'm not going to put you on the spot, but I'd like you to get back to me with some responses. It was alleged here that more people have died in rear end collisions since the red light cameras have been installed. I don't know whether that statistic is true in and of itself. I don't know whether that takes into account the increased amount of traffic since 2006. I don't know if those rear end collisions that have resulted in death are at intersections that are red light controlled. If you have the answers, I'll be glad to hear them now. Otherwise, get back to me. And the second one, it has been alleged that there are more rear end collisions than before red light cameras. And, again, the same questions. Does that take into account increased amount of traffic? So—
Mr. Mayor, to answer some of the questions, the, within the last two years, last year, traffic fatalities have been up. However, most of them are on our state roads, which, which don't have cameras.
Interstate, did you say?
Interstate, US 1.
100.
100. A couple of things the sheriff's office, we have just talked to the Florida Highway Patrol Director, and our current barracks are based, or the troopers that cover Flagler, Putman, and St. John are based out of St. Augustine. We have 11 troopers assigned to St. John's, seven to Putman County, and only four to Flagler, which makes no sense, being that we do have I-95, which is basically a— Flagler, which makes no sense, being that we do have I-95, which is basically a lane to get through the city of Palm Coast, A-1A, State Road 100. So we asked for them to reallocate some resources down this way. You go back two years, our homicides were down, so the traffic fatalities were down. I don't believe what the gentleman referring to were at the red light camera intersections themselves. So a lot of they were done on state roads. The rear end collisions, I would have to come up with the data. They kind of fluctuate. One time they were up, one time they were down. To answer the question, more dangerous collision, I'm going to go back some time. When the cameras were first put into place, the News Journal did their own survey, and they picked one of the intersections, and we had 10 less, and that was Cypress Point and Palm Coast Parkway, 10 less angle or dangerous collisions the first year, but I don't have the, all the data. But we will, the sheriff's office will take pro enforcement, all the necessary action based on, first of all, the sheriff's office supports any decision the council makes, of course. We will take the appropriate action necessary to, whatever needed to fit in with the changes that the council takes. So there are options we can do. There are, we can keep an eye on each intersection, you know, statistical data.
Well, Commander, I'm going to interrupt you for one moment, because assuming that council takes one of these actions and looking down the road, if we eliminate red light cameras altogether, I will personally, if I'm still in office, call on the sheriff's department to increase their vigilance at our major intersections. And I hope everyone understands that if a law enforcement officer tickets you for red light running, it's points on your license.
$264 is a full points on your license.
And a higher fine. So whether or not Mr. DeNobial agrees that that's a disincentive to run red lights or not, you've just upped the ante a little bit for the people who are inattentive drivers. Anyway, so thank you very much. This is an ongoing issue, I guess. Now, council comments. We've had public comment. Any additional council questions, comments, or a motion? Mr. Lorenzo.
I, as I think everyone knows, I have supported this program from the beginning, and my reasoning has been always the same. From young adults, we learn how to drive, and we learn how to drive a certain way, and that's a very consistent way. And with the introduction of the cameras, I find that drivers drive nervous and inconsistent. And when they drive inconsistent, it causes accidents, because you don't know what the other person is going to do. You don't know what they, they don't do what you expect them to do. And since the expansion of the program in 2012, and there's been quite a bit of discussion about it, on average, traffic accidents in Fogg County have increased by 40%. Now, that's certain, it's certain that they can all be attributed to the red light camera locations, but there has to be some correlation, because 40% is a really big number. We went in 2011 from 620 accidents to over 1,000 in 2012, I'm sorry, in 2013, the first full year with all the expanded cameras in place. Like I said, certainly not all attributed to those intersections, but there has to be a connection. I don't think Palm Coast drivers are exceptionally bad drivers. I don't think they're worse drivers than any other community. We have a very high number compared to other communities of red light cameras. I would really like to have gotten to a point where we just could have ended the program completely. That would have made me happiest. Getting down to five cameras is a lot better. You can see still by the number of incidents that there are, there are some problems at those intersections, and we need to determine why. We need to determine if there's engineering problems, site problems, or something else, or just traffic flow problems that is frustrating drivers, and they're taking risks that are unnecessary. So like I said, while I support getting down to the five, to the five cameras and reducing the contract, that's the most important part for me, is to reduce the contract down to 2017. It would end in September, a little more than two years from now, and like, again, not my first choice, but significantly better choice than we are in right now. Thank you.
Just one comment before I ask Mr. DeLorenzo if he'd like to offer that in the form of a motion. You have to be a little cautious when you start talking about what statisticians call correlation coefficients. Just because there are more accidents does not mean that any portion are attributable to red lights. The classic example given in statistics class, if you count the incidence or the concentration of fire trucks and fires, there's a very high correlation, a correlation coefficient. That doesn't make it cause and effect. But anyway, Mr. Lorenzo, it sounded like you were prepared to make a motion, to offer a motion.
I was not.
You're not, okay? Council, additional questions, comments, or is there a motion on this agenda item?
Your Honor, in the last workshop, I made a request that Sheriff Manfree would come and make a presentation as to how he would compensate for the loss of red light cameras. I'm still waiting for that presentation.
Again, I'll say, is there a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to move that we accept the amendments that are presented here with the reduced term to 2017.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion? I'll restate the motion. It is to reduce the number of traffic red light cameras to five with the substitution of one intersection for another, and to reduce the term of the contract by two years to September of 2017. Is that the motion, as I understand it?
Yes.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion, let's have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Maguire.
No.
Councilmember DeLorenzo.
Yes.
Councilmember Nobial.
Yes.
Councilmember Shipley.
No.
Mayor Nester.
Yes.
Mayor, this motion passes three to two.
Thank you very much. Okay. Consent agendas, items seven through 10. This is an opportunity for the public to speak on any of the consent agendas that might be acted upon by council as a group. Anyone wish to be heard on agenda items seven through 10?
Can you pull seven?
Pull number seven. Any other comments on the remaining agenda items eight, nine, and 10? If not, I'll accept a motion to approve the consent agenda items eight, nine, and 10.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries that objection. Agenda item number seven, resolution approving the restrictive covenant related to the Palm Coast Arts Foundation lease. Mr. Landon, would you explain this one, please?
I think I'm going to let Beau give you the details on this. He's been working with the Arts Foundation directly.
Sure. Good morning again. This is basically a restrictive covenant related to the site in Town Center that was deeded to the city for the purposes of development of a cultural arts facility, and is deed restricted for those purposes. Back about a year or so ago, city council entered into a lease agreement with the Arts Foundation for purposes of developing a cultural arts facility. It was a phased approach. The first phase was to develop a outdoor space for performances. Shortly thereafter the lease, the Arts Foundation received a grant from the state of Florida for that purpose. So as part of the grant requirements, it requires that both the Arts Foundation and the property owner, which is the city, enter in this restrictive covenant. The only provision that affects the city is that the property is used for cultural arts purposes. Any of the other provisions are really directly tied to the Arts Foundation, so repayment of the grant and things like that that you'll see in the restrictive covenant are directly related to the Arts Foundation. So it's consistent with the current deed restriction the city has, it's consistent with our lease agreement, and it's consistent with our purposes of the cultural arts development there at that site.
Any council questions on agenda item number seven? Since we removed this from the consent agenda, anyone for the public wish to hear on agenda item number seven?
I got it.
Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion. Back to council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion on agenda item number seven?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries that objection. This brings us to the public participation portion, meaning this is the opportunity for the public to speak on any item, not on today's agenda. Again, please give us your name, limit your contribution to three minutes.
Jack Carroll, Palm Coast. I went in to inquire about a water heater to replace the one I have in my house. Do you know that for a $399 water heater, the cost to replace mine would come over $1,000 to replace it? The city charges a fee regardless of whether it's a replacement or it's in a new house. How do you people expect a man to pay over $1,000 for a $300 water heater? This is absolutely atrocious. I want to just say one, but that's finished. That's just a piece of information that maybe you want to think about for a while. Anything happens in this city that increases, regardless of what it is, accidents always, if it increases, how come nobody says, well, you know, it's increased because our population increased? You know, if you have 200 people living in a city and one accident, then you get 800 people and you get two accidents, who's going to say it's an increase in accidents without involving the entire community? That's just, when you say something, let's have the whole picture.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I don't usually get up this often, but I must. Ron DeCosta, Palm Coast. I read in the Observer, there was a headline at the bottom of the front page, Palm Coast May Expand Fence Options. Multicolored fences to match multicolored houses. One response was really off the wall. I quote from the news article, "I want the people to choose what they want." Do you really want the people to choose what they want? My response to other quotes, "My view is not a right. I was not born with a right to see nice things." Excuse me? I was born with the ability to see, which gave me the God-given right to view good or bad things. Palm Coast has a very good, has very good rules and regulations put in place for the reason, and that reason is a quality of life, to be able to view our beautiful surroundings. This is why we have rules and regulations. Whatever you do, don't go overboard changing the way things are. When I travel around Palm Coast, I see beauty. I see well-groomed medians, shrubs, trees, flowers. My view is not a right. Picture yourself traveling the length of Beltier Parkway. Now picture on both sides of the parkway a rainbow of colored fences. Would you call that acceptable? No way.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning again. George Mayo, Palm Coast. This week is Sunshine Week in Florida, about the transparency and openness of government to the public availability to see what is going on. And last Saturday's paper of the News Journal has the subject here of all the Florida counties and cities that were graded for their accessibility on a 0 to 100 scale, 50 being average. Palm Coast was rated out of 58, which is good, but I'm hoping that we're working towards achieving a higher score than that. Volusia County received a 74. So I haven't had a problem with obtaining information, but obviously there is something there that we were rated a little bit lower, and I'm hoping that we can work to getting our score higher for Sunshine. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I'd like to follow up on what that gentleman just spoke on, because I've made requests. I made a request about a year ago to get some information on red light cameras, and I was sent from one person to another, and eventually I was sent to ATS, an entity that is not subject to Sunshine Law. And I've also learned from other people who have made requests. I'd like to give one instance of a gentleman who made, he got a ticket, and he was trying to fight it, and he made a request for one camera, information on one camera. And he was given a indication that that's a voluminous request, and he has to pay for it. Now, if the cost of getting information to defend yourself is greater than the cost of the penalty, then that person will walk away. So I'd be cautious to, with the, I'd like you guys to look into the, how they're giving out information, and whether or not they're using the voluminous request cost as a method of preventing folks from getting more, getting information. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker. See, no one approach the podium. We'll close the public portion. Back to council. First, Mr. Abreu, how does the city increase the cost of a water heater from $399 to $1,000?
You selected the wrong hat.
You selected the wrong hat?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's historically Mr. Abreu's issue.
While we wait for the correct hat.
Mayor, there is a cost for permitting for replacement of water heater.
What is that?
It's in the range, maybe $150, it may be $125, $175.
I actually think it might be in the 70s.
Given, it's in that range. It's a little shy of $1,000.
Well, let me, let me try to address it. I'm not sure what Mr. Carroll was referring to as far as going from $300 to $1,000. That's definitely not as a result of any city fees and rules, but yes, it is plumbing, and it is one of those that does, is a item that requires a plumbing permit or a building permit to replace it. Am I...
It's correct, plus also it's an electrical connection.
And it's, okay. So as is the case with any building permit, the cost of the plan review and the inspection is borne by the applicant, so the taxpayers, tax dollars do not go to that. It is, if you recall, all our building permit fees stay in the building department and cannot be used for anything else other than plan review and inspections and associated regulatory requirements in a building code. So once again, it's pretty basic.
We would be glad to get with Mr. Carroll after the meeting and discuss it and verify that the fees are correct and applicable.
Yes. And if contractor is telling them that the city is kicking the cost up to $1,000, we need to know that, too. So that's the only explanation we could have, but our fees are...
And I suspect, I don't know this for a fact, but I suspect that if the price tag on a water heater is $399, the contractor is probably going to charge something to do that installation.
Right. And so the total cost, but it has nothing to do with the city.
Okay. But if you'll be so kind as to confer with Mr. Carroll, see how his water heater costs $1,000?
Take care of it. Thank you.
Sure, Mr. DeLorenzo.
I believe, I looked at this about, I think about 18 months ago, maybe, and I think the fee was $72 or $78, somewhere in that range. We are higher than other communities. I think the average in the area is about 50 or 48, I might have come up with. Am I wrong, Nestor?
If you don't mind, I've confirmed it's $85.
85, okay. So they, yeah, it's, they could, the permit fee, and the important part of the permit fee, I can't believe, I'm going to defend a permit fee, but I will. the permit fee, I can't believe, I'm going to defend a permit fee, but I will. The important part, you pay a fee to trigger a permit, and the more important part, the inspection. You have electric, a water heater especially, you have electricity and water, two things that don't mix very well together. And we want to make sure that that is installed correctly so you don't get injured in your home. But there's a big gap you're talking about there. So, solicit another estimate would be my suggestion.
Okay. The comments about fence options, this is, this is part of an ongoing discussion in any community throughout the United States. On the one hand, we have the issue of private property rights, personal rights. On the other hand, you have the issue of community rights and obligations. And there's always a balancing act between how restrictive you need to be and how free to do whatever you like you need to be. You know, the old joke about, just because we have freedom of speech doesn't mean you can yell "fire" in a crowded theater. It's a balancing act, and I would suspect that over the next 50 years, city councils in Palm Coast and every other community in Flagler County will have this kind of a discussion. It will probably teeter back and forth. So.
Mr. Mayor, find me.
Mr. Nobiel.
Since my comments were used, without compromise, we are never going to get anywhere. So, to be restrictive versus be totally open, somebody has to make that statement. So, if we're sitting there saying, "No, we're not going to let people do anything," somebody has to stand up and say, "Well, I want them to do whatever they want." And that keys, or triggers, hopefully, what comes next is a compromise. That gets us to a point where most people are happy, not just where a few people are happy, not just where a few people make the decisions. This is what we have to avoid, is relying on, on government, city council like ourselves. We don't want five people making a decision. We want more than that. We want to, we, what we want to do is bring forward what the people want, not what two people want, not what eight people want, but what the majority of people want. So, if we're not willing to compromise, then we're going to find conflict, continue on for as long as we exist. So.
I feel I have to respond.
Sure.
This, like all governments in the United States, is a representative government. The people elect someone who they think represents their best interests. During an election process, you put forth your platform. Here's what I believe in. People either accept it or don't accept it. But when you get elected, you are a representative of the people. One of the biggest issues that elected officials face is this phrase about, "You've got to listen to the voice of the people." Which people? The 20 people who come to a council meeting on a particular issue? That leaves out the 77,980 people who aren't there. So, I respectfully disagree. This is a representative form of government. It is up to the five people to make decisions in the best interest. Now, compromise, I will agree with a portion of your statement. Raising an issue opens a discussion, and the discussion is the important part of the process. Whether there's compromise or not, whether you have a five to zero vote, a four to one, a three to two, at the end of the day, you will have had the discussion. You will have an opportunity to hear both sides or multiple sides of an issue, and then those five elected representatives will make a decision. Sunshine Week, sunshine rating, Palm Coast rating. Virginia, do you have any thoughts?
Mayor, I would like to address that, if you don't mind, because Virginia's taken the lead, and I'm going to let her to also address it. But, you know, Mr. Carmichael said something about being offended, and I'm going to tell you, I'm very offended by his comments. First of all, the News Journal report, first time I heard it, but it's not the first time we've had ratings like that. And city of Palm Coast is always above average. Every time we get a report, it usually grades us on things. And yes, Mayor, Virginia takes that, and we talk about, how can we use this as a learning tool to improve? And then she actually makes changes. We also find that sometimes they didn't know where to find the information, which means we have it, it's available, but maybe we need to make it easier. That's like with budget. We've actually started a budget center. So, all our financial information's in one location. So, we use those to try to learn from where we can improve and try to make the information as visible to the public as possible. So, appreciate that comment. The, Mr. Carmichael's comment, very much aware of it. What he has done, and the other individual, he's asked for individual information. You're all the public's information that we have. In other words, he wants the information of everybody that got a red light camera, name, address, anything else we have on them. Well, there are laws that protect that information. If you think about it, we have utility billing, we have credit card information. There are laws that protect that private information from us releasing it to the public. So, when we get a request, I want the information for everybody that got a red light camera, citation, and that's the request Virginia received, we give that, but we have to retract or redact.
Redact.
Redact the information that's not public. And it's, we go to the attorney and say, "Okay, it's, it's all open except for personal, private information that we're not supposed to give out." If they insist on that list, then we have to sit through there and strike through all that information that's not public. That takes time. And when you ask for thousands of records that we have to do that, who should pay for that? The individual who's made the request or the public?
Well, Mr. Landon, I think the Florida State Constitution provides for reasonable charges to be made for public record requests.
Yes, and that is correct also. So, the Constitution, state law, our policy, all says that the individual that's making that request, that costs a lot of time and money. Now, if you come in and just ask for a document, we have it, we give that out all the time. We point them in the direction. That doesn't cost any money. But when you ask for these special requests that particularly requires a lot of staff time to redact or work on providing that information, bylaw, we require the individual making that request. Virginia, please add to that, because I know you've been working on it directly?
Yes, with the Florida Foundation Amendment, First Amendment Foundation of Florida, we received their report, and I reviewed it and went over several items that they were missing. And we actually increased our score from a 58 to a 69, which is above average as well. I've worked with them to increase further transparency. So, we are improving with that for the open sunshine rules, as well as with public records. With public records, I am bound by state law, and I'm also bound by federal law. So, when an extensive request comes in, such as the all notices of violation, I have to look to the federal law and the state law and redact all personal information. And what that entails is actually, depending on how the record is provided to me, by our contractor, who is bound by sunshine and public records laws, to provide that information to me, I would have to print the document and redact all the personal information. That requires extensive time and paper. You would be charged for the paper copy as well. If it's a document that comes in electronically, and I am able to redact it and then protect it so no one can open it, then I provide it that way. But every public records request that does come in, we provide to the public in accordance with Florida Statute, Chapter 119.
Thank you. Complex issue, and if you've been following the news, our good friends in Tallahassee at this moment are considering further changes to the sunshine law, adding additional topics or areas that are not subject to open records requests. So, this, too, becomes a changing target. I'm very pleased to hear that we went from a 58 to a 69. I hope I will see that in the newspaper as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. DiLorenzo.
Question for Virginia. Virginia, I'm always, when I see the week in review, I'm always surprised by how many requests you receive. So, what's, what's an average month of public record requests?
I can't give you that answer off the top of my head. I can get it for you, though.
It's significant, though.
It's very, it's, it takes, it's very time consuming. It's processed through Barbara in my office as well as myself, and they come in daily.
Right.
And you just pump them out when they come in and process them accordingly.
And Virginia, is it fair to say that very seldom do we ever charge? It's only those unusual requests that take extraordinary amount of time that we charge for a record?
Correct.
If you want a toothpick, I'll give it to you for free. If you want a tree, it's going to cost you. I think that deals with the public. This brings us to discussion by city council matters.
Sorry, one other thing. Mr. Carroll asked about giving the whole story. So, since 2012, the population of the city has roughly increased by three and a half, by four, or 4%. That's math from my head. And so, there's your comparison. So, population increase of roughly 2,000, 2,500, 3,000 people at the most, and, which is roughly three and a half, 4%.
And as long as you're going there, American Automobile Association has said that with the improvement of the economic condition, there are more people driving, there are more cars on the road regardless of population. Families that may have cut back to one car go back to two cars. There are a number of factors. The whole story is a complex one. Discussion by city council that matters not on the agenda. Mr. McGuire, suppose we start with you?
I just want to comment that, why I voted no on the red light camera amendment, I said I would not support it unless I heard from the sheriff as to what he was going to do to pick up the difference. This is a public safety issue. It's a law enforcement issue, and I can't support something without knowing what's going to happen down the road and what's behind it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nobiel?
Nothing.
Mr. DiLorenzo?
Yes, starting on Saturday and running through the, Saturday 21st and running through the 29th is the Flagler Parade of Homes annual event, 21st annual. And to put residential, residential construction perspective for economic, as economic development or economic driver in Flagler County, new homes contributed about $200 million in value to the community last, last year, and supported the full-time equivalent of about 1,700 or 1,800 jobs. So, go out and visit the houses.
Odd that you would have that data at your fingertips.
Well, I'm presenting to the EDC, so I happen to have it in my head. I got that coming up.
All of which is good news. Mr. Shipley?
No, I don't know.
I don't know if Mr. Landon's going to touch on this, but Food Truck Tuesday starts tonight. It's your chance. Discussion by city attorney that matters not on the agenda.
Nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Landon, discussion by city manager.
Yeah, Food Truck Tuesday, it's that time of year where, you know, a lot of activity. Boy, it was like bumper cars trying to get my mulch through Lowe's on Saturday. A lot of, a lot of traffic and everything, but it's exciting. May 2nd is Arbor Day, and with our, we start off with the 5K run, and so that's something to look forward to and have coming up. Also, we are in the midst of our 2015 photo contest, so the photographers go to our website. That's the pictures we lots of times use to promote Palm Coast, and we use to, as part of our branding campaign. So, anybody that goes out and takes pictures of Palm Coast, we've got some nice awards and everything. We've been doing this last couple of years, very popular. So, encourage everybody to do that. Mayor, that's all I've got for the day.
Thank you very much.
One word, one word. Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Happy St. Patrick's Day to all of you.
The city attorney?
Yes.
He said nothing.
He said nothing.
So, I know to surprise. Someone like him.
We stand adjourned. Thank you very much.